So I'm moving now to our commission report. I'm going to start with our arts commission.
Okay, you know I love to get up here and make you all laugh and smile and tell you all the good news about the arts commission, but I found it almost impossible to sit and listen tonight to the Historic Preservation Committee and what they had to say about ordinances and whether or not ordinances are being followed. And I've decided that I'm going to speak up at this meeting as a follow-up to the joint meeting and let you know, since you are asking for this information, that in addition to what has happened in the Historic Preservation Committee and that ordinance, that there is now on the books an art ordinance. You approved it in January 2014. It says that a building permit cannot be issued if a property or if a development qualifies for public art without first going through some very specific public art procedures and steps. And the inn was issued that permit without those steps being followed. Now, I had the pleasure of meeting with Brian Skaggs and with Alex Kim over at the Ojai Valley Inn and Spa a week ago, this last Friday. And much to my dismay, I was told that they were told, that the city said they did not have to follow the ordinance, that it was waived for them. So just bring that to your attention because it's certainly disturbing to hear that. But that's not all. It was also suggested to me that I watched the Planning Commission meeting that was held last week. And I haven't watched the Planning Commission, but I have been given some input on it. And I was also told that the arts commission, the arts commission's feet, let's say, were held to the fire when it came to giving a reason to the Wiles as to why they now qualify and they must do a public art project. And I want to make it really clear that no one, no one on the arts commission walked over here to City Hall and told anyone that now the Wild Academy must do a public art program. First of all, it was completely unclear to me that when you apply for a new conditional use permit, a CUP, that that means that everything starts anew and that now that project is under the new ordinance. I didn't know that and I doubt very much if any of my fellow commissioners knew that. So none of us were the ones that went and put this ball into motion. I think what happened was that someone here at City realized that they have to start paying attention to the ordinances. They let it go with the Ojai Valley Inn and maybe perhaps now they were thinking, boy, we better not let that happen with Wild Tennis Academy. So just want to make it perfectly clear. And I also want to say on behalf of the commission that something has to be fixed. Something's really broken when it comes to what the ordinances are, how they're being conveyed to the people they affect and the timeline on that. Anything that I can do as Chair of the Public Art Committee, anything at all, I'm happy and willing to do. Please just let us know what we can do to help this process along. But we also count on all of you to ensure that this ordinance that we worked so hard on and that we just congratulated Barbara Hirsch for having such a hand in is followed. Otherwise, what does it mean if we can just say, doesn't count here, it doesn't count there? So, not a happy report tonight, but I really felt it was important to bring this up. Thank you.
Thank you Chair Golden. I do have a couple of questions, just real quick for you. In terms of, you mentioned that none of you came to City Hall and said, or were unaware that when the new CUP was processed or going through the whole Planning Commission, that it is subject to the current ordinances. And I also watched that, the tape, I watched, I tried to watch all of them, believe it or not. And I think it was our attorney that, our Mr., no, Mr. Summers, Summers that did read the code there and started to address that there. So nobody else but our city attorney. And that was, I think, important to start following our ordinance. I definitely agree with you. And in terms of the inn, you mentioned that your ordinance was to start in January. I think that work permit, I think was issued in December.
Uh, Mayor Lara. New ordinance, Mayor Lara, is in effect to 2014.
2014, oh, January 14. So we, I do feel like we need then to report on that if that's the case because we do need to start, it's been a recurring issue. And we need some type of mechanism to not only inform our commission, but also inform our public of what these ordinances, and I agree with you, clarity, the interpretation and the timeline would be, would be very valuable.
And may I add that I think it's important for, I don't think it's the position of the arts commission to follow up with the inn on what they're doing, but they're of course in arrears because they have not done the steps that were required before the building permit. And so as Chair of the Public Art Committee, I am anxiously awaiting to see how far along now in the process they are. A group called the Committee to Approve Public Art, Kappa, needs to be formed and needs to review the art project that they're going to propose. And they need to be getting going on that because it should have been done before they were ever issued a building permit.
And I believe some of my colleagues have some question or comments.
Well, I just, I just want to amplify what you said, Mayor Lara, that I feel it's an important principle for me as a city council person to follow. And that is to do what I can to ensure that the ordinances are followed. If we have a problem with an ordinance, the appropriate reaction, our response to that is not to ignore it, but to change it. I think deciding to solve a problem with an ordinance by ignoring it is simply not good governance and we should not do that.
Mayor Protem Blatz.
Yes, I just, I have a comment and I couldn't agree with you more, Chair Golden. One of the things that I want to mention is earlier in our workshop tonight, we asked for a report on the situation with the fence that was allowed to go up. Tonight, we're now asking for a report on, I don't know whether the council wishes a report on Wild Tennis Academy, why the, why the arts commission wasn't brought back into the loop on that. And then our chair being told that, the inn was told that they didn't need to worry about the ordinance for that. And we're asking for that report. Several months ago, I asked for a report when it came to the debacle with the cell tower approval, initial approval. And I have yet to see that report. So what I would really appreciate is that whenever council asks for reports such as this, that somehow it gets put on a list so that when we get busy and we don't think of it, we don't forget that we asked for that report because we haven't gotten the report and it's been several months on the cell tower. And I don't want to see reports on these issues that were brought in front of us tonight for them to fall through a crack as well.
Councilmember Clark.
Um, thank you for bringing that to our attention. And I agree that the public art ordinance is a very important one and should be followed by everyone, every applicant that is required to contribute public art with their development. And I too request that there be a report with, I'm not so hesitant to give a time certain on that as well. I would like to have it, have it at the first meeting in March.
We're going to move on to item number two, city council goals. And we're going to start with the staff report on these, on these goals. Hey, we call, oh, perfect.
Thank you, Mayor and members of the city council.
If you could please. Mr. Clark, floor is yours.
Thank you. I wanted to sort of set the stage for the discussion of goals by talking about some of the philosophy that's gone on in the past few years. And that is that going back three or four years ago now, the city council identified the need to address infrastructure as its highest priority. And through the budgets over the past three or four years, what we've done is we've set aside money for infrastructure to the point where 20% of our transient occupancy tax is going into, into the capital improvement fund for infrastructure. And I think that that is paying off. We had a million dollar paving project last year. We have another million dollar paving project coming up. We've been able to repair the museum. We've been able to upgrade Boyd Center and the recreation offices and many different projects that are way, we're way, way behind schedule. However, one of the results of that is that we have also made a conscious decision to keep staffing lean. And so when you go through the various departments, what you'll find is that we do have people who are available to do the ongoing operations of the city and to keep up with the work that way. And then a very few number of people, mostly at the department head level, who are capable of taking on special projects that come along over time. So as we talk about goals, at the last discussion of this a year ago, we identified a number of goals and staff's been pretty much fully engaged working on those goals. And really, I don't think has the capacity right now to take on others unless we defer some of those that maybe are a lower priority. Having said that, as we finish up various projects, we then do have the capacity. So I think a lot of this exercise is not saying what we will and what we won't do, but saying what we should do now and what we can defer to a later period of time. And I'm struck by the fact that things come up to change that over time. So, so for example, we didn't know until last month that we need to do a complete review of our height ordinance. And that's going to take resources to do. We're already spending time preparing the initial study so that we can do a negative declaration. So we have listed for you in this staff report, the things that we're working on right now. That list can be reprioritized. And if there's other things that you'd like us to work on, we can do that. We just can't do everything all at once. And if you'd like more details on some of the projects or what some of the departments are doing, I'd be glad to provide that.
Just as a start of reference, I particularly as a council member to get a better understanding of what staff is capable of doing or not, could you go through all the department heads and explain how many employees are under each department and their, and their duties other than the council's priority? Do you have that information?
Yes, I sure do. So, so starting with administration, in the city manager's office, we have myself, the city manager, Steve McClary, the deputy city manager, and Rhonda Bessor, who not only is city clerk, but is also the records manager. And then we also have an office specialist. So Mr. McClary spends a considerable amount of his time supervising the recreation department and has been allocated over there when we eliminated the recreation director position. But he is available to do some of the projects that are listed here and is working on them. And I myself take on a number of projects myself in addition to my normal duties supervising other staff, as does the city clerk. So really, you've got three people there who could devote some of their time to some of these projects. In the community development department, we have a director. In the budget, we have a part-time assistant planner and that is temporarily being filled by contract planners. And then we have the building staff. Really, the building staff, which consists of the building official and the code enforcement officer and the clerk, three people, is fully engaged doing building activities. But many of the projects that are the highest priorities of the city council tend to fall into the planning area. So a lot, so the contract planner and the director of community development spend a lot of their time working on these projects. And actually, some of these projects spill over and are done in the city manager's office just as a resource necessity. In the finance department, we have a finance director and then we have four other people who are technical staff. And really, the director has been involved in some special projects such as the formation of the T-Bid that we use to fund our marketing. But for the most part, that position is fully engaged, probably overfully engaged, in just doing the basics, fundamentals of the accounting of the city. In the public works department, we have a number of people who are involved in maintenance activities, in transportation activities with the trolley system, with the maintenance shop. And then we have the public works director and two administrative personnel. And in that department, you'll notice that all of the reports are signed by the public works director. And these reports are done in addition to his duties of executing the various public works projects that we have and supervising his staff and so forth. So then in the recreation department, I indicated that we did eliminate the director of that department and Mr. McClary is spending a portion of his time being director. And then we have a recreation manager. And they have been working on some of the projects, particularly those that fall within recreation, such as the master planning of Sarzati Park and working on the lighting of the skate park as far as getting planning approvals for that, working with the motocross people and so forth. So I hope, I hope that's helpful, but I'd be glad to provide more detail if needed.
Any of the council have any questions for staff?
In terms of the information by department, no, not that.
No, any other questions for staff in regards to just goal setting or?
Yes. Councilmember Wyre. Mr. Clark, in the, in the council, what we just went through with item 1E is the, I think, an illustration of the, to make the point and, and leads to the question I want to make. And that is, here we have something that is going to take planning commission time. It's going to take staff time. It's going to take city council time for something that if had been handled properly at the beginning, would now be taking no time. In other words, if the zoning map had been rendered consistent with that development at the front end, if the business licenses have been properly, if processes were putting place for business license processing, we're fixing a problem that was perhaps avoidable. If we had better ways of handling what we're doing in terms of, you know, planning practices or whatever else. So what I'm trying to get at is, and I understand it's, it's a small town with a lot of, you know, we have, we're small, but we are very ambitious in the city of Ojai. And then the other is we have a lot of things we're trying to accomplish. And then the other side of that is we're, we're small, so we're trying to do a lot with a small staff. And what I'm trying to get at is addressing the issue of, for lack of a better word, staff productivity, council productivity, commission productivity. All, it's one thing to talk about all these goals, but it's another, I mean, you hit the nail on the head. You know, we're going to have to do, all of a sudden, we got to do a height ordinance review. Taking, and we're, and what do we do about that? But the other thing that's happening is what just happened with 1E. Stuff is coming up that we have to fix that if we'd had the right processes in place, wouldn't have to be fixed. And how do we kind of, almost it's like a self-audit or a performance audit or looking at our codes. I mean, it's, it's a chicken egg issue is what I'm trying to say. And it's, we need to have, we need to maybe do better about our, what we have in place to pursue these goals so we're not just stretching ourselves thinner and thinner and thinner and getting these dysfunctions that occur.
So, so could I address that a little bit?
Please.
Because I think, you know, I think that is a really important point, but I also think it's one that we've tried to recognize as we've gone forward. And I, you know, when I look at the history of Ojai, we went through two recessions. The first recession was when the Ojai Valley Inn closed and our source of funding was cut off for longer than we expected. And then as soon as that happened, the inn didn't even have a chance to build up its revenues and we hit the, the national recession or the international recession, whatever it is. During those periods of time, we fell way behind in staffing and way behind in capital improvements. That's, you know, 10 years of not spending money on our roads, not spending money on our buildings and so forth, but it's also 10 years of having very thin staff. For example, when I first got here, we had one half planner. That was the staffing of the community development department. So as we've had opportunities to change staff, what we've looked at is providing more resources in the areas where there are higher priorities and more priorities and being more lean and effective administratively. So it's, we've, because we've computerized some of our processes in the finance department, we were able to limit a full-time accounting position. And we're still able to do the same work that we were before. Because we've decided to contract out for, for maintenance services, you know, cleaning the restrooms and emptying the trash cans and so forth, we're able to accomplish with less money and less staff, some of the maintenance functions that we had before. Because we went with a contract building official and contract building inspector, we're able to perform that function at the same level, but for less money. And the savings, rather than putting that into capital improvements, that actually went into more staffing. So we, we do have a full-time community development director. We do have the budget to cover a part-time planning assistant. And we do now have a budget to cover a part-time code enforcement officer, all of which address these priorities. So I think we've, we've tried to look for efficiencies and take advantage of efficiencies and focus resources where the priorities are.
Any other questions or comments, staff, before I turn?
Just a quick one, and we're still struggling.
I just want to point out something that councilmember Wyreck mentioned, his procedures and protocols. And another example is our cultural resources. Do we have those procedures in place that would have prevented some type of projects to go through, whether it be, or whether it be some, the 1105 or even to an extent, other procedures like the cell tower would have gone through? Again, what do we address first? Is it procedures or, or these goals, which are equally important, I think? And it's just, again, issues that our, our commission had about code enforcement, about knowing what's on our ordinances, Historical Preservation Commission having issues with code enforcement, updating them. It, we need to, it's, it's a, I think we've, we're slowly identifying what needs to be worked on and how to do it is going to be the, the question. How, how are we going to think outside the box to really get it done? And, and there has been some offering from the public to assist us, but we need to start identifying exactly which ones we want to tackle, I think, as a council. And it's interesting, you, you mentioned Rhonda under the city manager department because if you look at the whole flow chart, Rhonda is her separate identity. And, and so I know there's clear communication between obviously her and the city manager, but it's, it's even how our structure, how our government structure is not being adhered to how it's originally put, it's modified. So it's, it's a lot to work on, but I'm just going to leave it with that thought and I'm going to put it back to the, I'm going to turn it back to the public for input unless some other council members have any questions or comments.
Could I just briefly respond to that? Because I think you covered some new material that wasn't covered. And I, I don't want to get too carried away with responding to some of this stuff. I think during the thin times, we tried to get commissions and committees to do work themselves. And I think we ended up spinning our wheels when we did that. A lot of time and effort was spent because they didn't have the support from staff or the support from the attorney's office. So I think just like the city council needs to prioritize its, its projects, I think the commissions need to decide what their highest priorities are. And as, as Mr. Howard indicated, we do now have an attorney who's available to help at least during this interim period with the HPC and with the Planning Commission. And that's, that's an extra resource. And we have staff for both of those bodies. But, you know, we're drawing on the same staff, so they're going to have to set their priorities. The other thing with procedures is properly executing procedures depends a lot on personnel. And we went through a period when we either didn't have personnel or the personnel we had didn't have the qualifications that our current personnel has. For example, we had a part-time planner who was spending all of their time writing planning reports and none of their time going over procedures and making, making sure procedures in place. Now we have a full-time community development director who's really just come on board, who has lots of experience with all of these procedures in other communities. And she is actually in the process of bringing us up to speed in, in having the proper procedures. In fact, the issue that came up this evening with the M1 zone is because she identified a procedure that was not in place that should have been in place. In the public works department, we didn't have an in-house engineer running that department. Having an in-house engineer, especially the one we happened to get, has been a huge step forward for us. So, yeah. And I, and I think more recently, we recruited a very high caliber finance director from, from the city of Ventura that we were very lucky to have. So I think a part of the answer is that we didn't have proper procedures in place because we didn't have people who knew what those procedures were and because we didn't have the resources to address them. But I do think that by getting competent personnel and by focusing on those procedures that we will improve.
Yeah, councilmember Haney.
First of all, before we turn it over to the public, Rob, I've watched you, I've watched you govern the city for the last few years. And I think coming into the recession, out of the recession, I thought, I think personally you did a wonderful job. I think to be able to, to have money set aside, to do the paving that we're doing right now, to do a lot of the infrastructure work that we're doing, I think is incredible. So I want to start with that. But, but I also want to go back to the fact that a lot of these procedures that we're missing and a lot of the things that are, that were, all these bumps in the roads that we're running into, start from a leadership. And it has to come from the city manager. It has to be directed to his staff and his staff, and you would have to be the person that helps them set those priorities based on all of this, the interaction with the community, as well as the interaction from the city council. It, to me, it's no different as a contractor. You know, I agree to perform a task for a client. It's up to me to make sure that my man understands the priorities of completing that task and completing that task in a timely manner. So I want to throw that into, to the mix also. I'm not saying you're negligent. What I'm saying is, I think that the staff now could use some finer direction as to what are the priorities that they can do along with their additional work and responsibilities to help improve or enhance some of these small issues that we're running into. For instance, I could start with one. I'm pulling a permit with the, with the city of Ventura. I go into their office, I'm given a two-page checklist. I know exactly what is expected of me as a contractor and they know, and they know what to receive from me. It's, it's a two-way street. And it works, it's clear, it's understandable, it's definable, and there's no headaches. So again, that's, obviously, they started somewhere and they've initiated that. That's what I would like to see us do, is you sit down with your staff and ask them what are some of the issues and the concerns that they're hearing from the public. And even the one that was directed tonight from the, from the public about how we interact with staff and our tone. That's a simple, that's a simple one to correct. But it has to be helped, determined as to, is it a priority one or is it a priority three? Is it a, you know, and that, I believe, is what we need more of.
I'm going to turn it to the public, Mr. Coyne.
To the mayor and members of the council, thank you for this opportunity to comment. And I'd like first to welcome the new interim city attorney to the dais here. I know that Mr. Fletcher will be missed for his attention to detail and his wry wit. And I look forward to Mr. Howard surpassing those standards. I'm asking you tonight to include the protection of Ojai's cultural resources at the earliest opportunity and as a standalone agenda item. The last two times that cultural resources have been on the council agenda, they have been lumped in with directors exemptions and zoning clearances. While the three were both involved at 1105 North Signal Street, the long-term protection of Ojai's archaeological heritage is called for in the city's general plan. of Ojai's archaeological heritage is called for in the city's general plan and requires specific attention. At the last council meeting, the agenda item discussion bounced back and forth between cultural resources and zoning clearances and directors exemptions, leaving the focus diffused and difficult to follow. Beyond that, Ojai's cultural resources are still at grave risk as the council moves towards creating a system to protect them. There are a number of properties at present where applications have been filed with the city where cultural resources are potentially present and at risk. Once again, it is Ojai's citizens that are bringing this to the planner's attention for needed proper evaluation of those resources. Such evaluation is still not on the planner's radar screen for some reason. You could tonight provide clear instruction to staff to consult with our local Chumash and follow the Ojai general plan and state law. That would help. Thank you.
Mr. Mark Arbun, you're going to have to help me.
Mark Abramyuk.
Abramyuk.
Um, yes, so, uh, my name is Mark Abramyuk. I'm an archaeologist. I live at Four Non Canata. And, um, I just wanted to make a, a comment. The Ojai general plan policy asserts that the city shall develop programs to identify and analyze known cultural resources, attempt to discover potential resources, and plan for their appropriate examination and disposition. It's a term "potential" resources that I would like to bring to the attention of the council, since it is no big secret that Chumash cultural resources have been dug up by accident in Ojai. This needs to stop. All sites are important, not just the ones that have been documented. This is because each and every site served a specific function in a much larger Chumash cultural system operating throughout the valley. Whether the site was a camp, a campground, an activity area, or a home base, each served a role in our understanding of Chumash society as a whole. This, of course, means that every site is an invaluable source of information about human societies in general and how they operate. More attention needs to be paid to cultural resources. This issue is paramount because developments are being planned without a clear, rigorous protocol for preventing potential cultural resources from being destroyed. Thank you.
Pat Tumamai.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor Lara, council members. Um, I have a letter here, and I have to apologize, it, I'm sure you'll have to share this letter. It's in regards to the last meeting I was, I attended, uh, it was on a com, about a comment that Kathleen Walt had made on her discussion with the Katie Sanchez, a commission, uh, from, a commissioner from the Native American Heritage Commission. Uh, present. It's a formal letter of complaint on her, uh, comment, um, but that's not why I'm, why I'm here actually tonight. The other, to follow up on the last meeting, uh, I mentioned, uh, three particular projects that might be at risk at, uh, adverse effects within the city of Ojai that might be planned and may have permits already issued. Well, it turns out there might be a few others other than those three, and I would like to address those. And I, we have met with Kathleen, and we'd like to know the status of those, that, uh, that, uh, list of other, uh, properties that are at risk. And, and if you talk about priorities and goals, that's our priority. These things are going through so fast, and they've already been, uh, they're in process and in progress already. So, I would like to address it to you guys, that we, we need priority in this. We need action now. And I, I hope that you guys will take a look, go back to Kathleen, find out what status is and what she's planning to do in her procedures of addressing these issues. Uh, we're, we're at, our time's running out, and I think that, you know, decisions need to be made, and I hope that you guys will certainly take care of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Julie Tumamai Stensley?
Stensley.
Stensley, sorry.
Good evening, Mayor Lara, council members, staff, and community, those present and those watching. My name is Julie Tumamai Stensley. I'm the tribal chair of the Barbarano Ventodano Band of Mission Indians. Um, I'm not going to repeat what everything has been said so far, uh, but it is important that we do keep, uh, our culture of 10,000 years plus alive and valuable and viable here in this community, especially for the generations yet to come. A little background on our family. In the consultation or meeting with, uh, Ms. Walt, which was welcomed, and we thanked her for that, uh, that opportunity to be able to talk, um, in, in that, our focus would be on the consultation and how it's going to take place. We need to be able to access records here. We were denied that. I provided the records that are in the files here. Uh, we were told that we have to go to the clearinghouse. Um, you know, there's a, there's a whole process of consultation, and it's going to take a long time for everybody to get on board with what that means. But, um, we are local, we grew up here, we've been here presently, our family, since the 50s. But our family is here from way back, three villages in the Ojai Valley, and we all, we come from a bigger background, covering three counties and two of the Four Channel Islands. Both Patrick and I are on the most likely descendant list from the Native American Heritage Commission. I am a commissioner myself, been there since 2007. Our tribal band, the Barbarano Ventodano Band of Mission Indians, have been around, established that in 2002. So, you know, we are the local people. I, we, I explained to Ms. Walt that our family is, besides our cousins, are here in the valley, that's it. And Patrick and I are the only two who are being responsible and speaking up and protecting, and we wear many, many hats, uh, in our culture. I'm an educator, I do consulting, I do the cultural resource monitoring. At the death of our father in 92, it was my responsibility to take over. I do blessings. David Berry even asked me here where I did an invocation. We do many, many different things, and we are covering all these other counties too, where our descendancy comes from. So, the SB 18 housing element, just to give some, um, that was a misstep last year when you did your housing element in your general plan. We should have been consulted at that time. It is law. So, that was, that was overlooked. Um, we would like to just be able to, you know, we're going to be right behind the tractors when these development projects that have been approved. We're going to be out there watching them. And you don't put Batco drivers and project managers looking for our, and telling you, oh, if we find something, we'll stop. That never happens. So, we will be there when these projects are going on. And when trees are removed, there's a, there's a whole nother, you know, place there when we're talking about our trees in the valley. A lot of the roots are holding, in some cases, uh, human remains or our artifacts. So, there's a lot of places and potentials for destruction of our culture. So, we will, um, are looking forward to more meetings and to helping city council staff and, uh, through this process. We have a nice, small, little group here, and I appreciate, uh, the help that they've been giving us too. And I thank you for your time.
Don TD. Thank you.
Honorable mayor and city, city council members, thank you for being here. You serve as the heart and the mind of this city. Your decisions impact the lives of all of us. Thank you for being, for letting us be a part of this process. Tonight, we are discussing your vision and goals for the upcoming year. The vision and goals that will become Ojai's vision and goals. Let us help you. We all know why I'm here. I am here for the same reason that I have stood before you nearly every city council meeting for the last four months, to urge you to direct staff to protect Ojai's cultural resources, the archaeological sites and sacred places of the Chumash and their predecessors. We don't have the luxury of pointing to an ordinance right now. There is no ordinance to protect cultural resources. Let 2015 be the year to protect cultural resources. Over the past four months, it has become abundantly clear that city staff has repeatedly fallen short in properly identifying and mitigating potential, significant adverse impacts to cultural resources as required under the general plan and SEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act. First, there was 1105 North Signal Street, then the Ojai Valley Inn, and now we're finding out there are even more. A list of priority properties has been provided to city staff to assess potential impacts on cultural resources. We are awaiting response to this report. While we are encouraged by very recent efforts to consult with the local Chumash, an applicant can walk up to the counter tomorrow and be issued a building permit that might potentially destroy 10,000 years of Ojai history and the history of the Chumash people. There is grave danger in what is happening here, so what can you do tonight? The same thing we've been taught to do when we were younger, when we faced danger. Direct staff to stop, look, and listen. Stop the issuance of building permits on properties that we've identified until the issue of cultural resource protection can be addressed. Look into the city's procedures for identifying and protecting cultural resources now for both current developments and new applications coming in, and listen to concerned citizens and the local Chumash tribal members who are knowledgeable experts in this area. It's that simple. I urge you to act now to protect cultural resources, assign cultural resource procedures its own agenda item, and recognize the legal and ethical obligation of protecting Ojai's cultural resources today. I urge you to make protection of cultural resources a priority starting today. Thank you.
Meg Goodwin.
Meg Goodwin, 304 North Montgomery Street. Um, basically, Christine Golden and William Wyrick covered what I was concerned about, which is sort of not understanding procedures to approve things and just kind of willy-nilly not listening to your commissions. And also, definitely, we need a cultural resources ordinance that protects, um, our history. And so, I'm glad everybody brought that up. And also, I would just love to see you guys consider looking at the big picture of the pesticide use in this valley, because now they're spraying for the citrus iliot. And I think Ojai is such a small enclosed ecosystem that if we don't really, you know, and all of our water comes from our watershed, which all the pesticide drains into, we really need to look into making Ojai not just a tree city, but a pesticide-free, organic city, and prove that you can have flourishing agriculture without, uh, I want to say Monsanto, but I don't want to invoke their names, so I'll just say without pesticide. And I also just want to thank you guys for being, you know, working for nothing, basically $100 a week, and having full-time jobs during the day, and doing what you do, and having to take all this, be the face of the city management and all that, because it's, it's a thankless, unending job, and I really appreciate what you all do. So, thank you, good luck with your goals.
Thank you. I don't have any more speakers cards, but anybody else wishing to speak on this item from the public? No? Then I'll turn it back to council, Councilmember Wyrick.
Mayor Lara, I, um, I've been thinking a lot about this whole matter of the cultural resources. I've been listening multiple times for, that citizens have come forward with their very specific research and recommendations. And we seem to have gotten to a bit of an impasse in terms of trying to promote, um, communication between, um, the advocates for and, and protectors of the cultural resources and staff. And I just, I'm going to direct the question to Mr. Howard. Mr. Howard, is it, I, let me just say that I have, before I ask the question, I've been trying, and I was an economist, not an attorney, to understand SEQA, SB 18, what's maybe coming down the pike in AB 52, and so on and so forth, the confidentiality issues with cultural resources, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I'm no way on top of it, but I'm trying to understand as much as I can, as quickly as I can. And I'm wondering if it would be advisable for you, or Mr. Simmons, especially, uh, with Mr. Simmons being a pro, be part of specifically associated with the HPC and MPC right now, the Historic Preservation Commission, the Planning Commission, that there be some sort of consultation, or direction from council for consultation, with one of our city attorneys, staff specifically, the community development staff, and the rep, the representatives that have been repeatedly coming here with their concern from the community. There seem to be issues about what information can be shared or not shared, who are the proper representatives, what are the procedures for doing that, you know, it's so on and so forth. And I'm not sure I'm comfortable with those type of what amount to legal determinations being made by the community development director without, um, a person, uh, the city attorney being part of those discussions. That's my question. Would that be advisable?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, let me answer it this way, uh, and, and it's kind of two-part. From, from my own perspective, as your legal advisor, I don't have a problem with that at all. I've met with members of the community in my previous life when they, they had issues, whether it was through council direction or city manager direction, done it many times, would be happy to do it here. I don't control other members of staff, the city, that's why I'm answering it sort of a two-part. I think the city manager needs to weigh in on his staff, maybe obtain some more information as to what dialogue has occurred in the past, where they are, whether there is an impasse, is the, I think I heard the word used, uh, whether there is some, some value in further meetings, or if there's value in looking at potentially, uh, some legislation, like a moratorium, to protect cultural resources while further zoning and perhaps a cultural resource protection ordinance is studied. Uh, but going back to your, to your point, certainly, I don't have a problem with meeting with members of the community, whether it be a representative or, or a group. Be happy to do it.
And part of the reason I'm asking that is I, I would really value your report directly to us as one of the, part of being the client, the city councils, part of, you know, the overall body of the city, which is your client, in kind of, um, in helping us to frame the issue. Before I'd be willing to say anything with respect to moratoriums or be advocacy on that, I'd want to know, I'd want more due diligence. But I also don't want resources being destroyed inappropriately. So, before moving into like a, a formal pause, I would hope that staff would maybe agree we'd need to slow down a little and get the city attorney involved in maybe helping us get educated about this whole matter.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Wyrick, again, I, I'm pleased and available. It's really where you are with staff. I mean, I don't have much background in terms of what dialogue has existed between staff and these groups or individuals. And so, I'm lacking that background. Uh, I'm a little bit, not hesitant, uh, but I just don't have enough information. But if it's more of an opportunity to meet with someone, gain information, be able to convey, uh, an issue, uh, consistent with the statutory scheme we're dealing with, whether it's SEQA, SB 18, and, and other legislation that's currently pending, be happy to do it.
Councilmember Haney?
I don't know how, uh, I don't know how this is formulated, but what I'm hearing is we need a cultural commission. I think that's what I'm hearing. I'm not sure if we're ready for that. I don't know if, I don't know, I wouldn't even know how to, how to start. I don't know if we should direct, um, the city manager to, um, start that ball in motion. Um, and I, I would like to hear more from the rest of the council people. But along with that, um, it's an, um, the same thing that you touched on, Betsy, earlier, was a, an economical development commission too. If someone's going to help us write or define an ordinance regarding cultural issues, it sure seems like we'd want to bring in the experts in our community, um, as well as our experts and our, our city attorney. And combine those resources. So, part of me says, that, that, part of me says do an ad hoc committee. I'm not sure if that's the way to go. Um, and it sure seems like these cultural resources are going to be with us the rest of our lives and the rest of the, the duration of this Ojai community. So, um, we've created a recreation and parks commission to help us, guide us through that. We've We've created a Planning Commission to help us guide us through that phase of it. We've created these commissions to help us to develop the right language, the right ordinances, and the right ways. So, I just don't know how to go about it, but I would not be opposed to something like that.
Councilmember Clapp.
Well, ever the pragmatists here, we are a small community with a limited budget, and we're already struggling to finish the goals from the prior goal-setting session. I hesitate to create another commission, even when I talk about an economic development one. That's kind of like a pipe dream, because the reality is, we are stretched so thin that to create another commission, who's going to sit in at that commission meeting? Right now, you know, Steve McClary sits in for the Arts Commission, et cetera, et cetera. There's a staff member that has to sit on those commissions. They're already stretched really thin. So, to add yet another commission, we've already added the Building Appeals Board, is probably not realistic economically and staff-wise. You can't, we can't overburden our staff to that degree. That being said, I just think we need some guidance on how we incorporate cultural resource preservation into our policies. And I think it really is as simple as that. It's not simple, but it's as simple as that. I don't think we need to turn it into another bureaucratic body. And maybe I, Mr. Howard, you could suggest the simplest, most pragmatic, most economically feasible, less, the least amount of burden on staff to get this matter resolved, because it does need to be resolved, but we have to do it within the confines of our transient rental ordinance, our vacation rental issue, our complete streets, and our, what is it our call, our neighborhood planning, and all these other things that we're doing. Skateboard park lighting at night, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. To add yet another layer is just unrealistic. So, Mr. Howard, do you know of any way, shape, or form, or Mr. Clark, any feedback on this so that we can take care of this matter in the most efficient manner possible, the least amount of staff time, the least amount of money?
Yeah. I forgot my magic wand.
I mean, is my line?
Yeah. So, when we had a discussion at the last meeting, I think it was, we had several topics, including cultural resources. And my understanding is that the council asked that we have a discussion of cultural resources as a standalone item as soon as possible. So, we have been putting that on the tracking agendas coming up, and I think in March we plan to have a discussion item. Now, that's not going to be a super in-depth discussion item with an ordinance attached to it and all that, but I think it'll be a start of the educational process, and certainly bringing the city attorney into that discussion is a helpful piece of information. But I think it's, there's some challenges to face, because on one hand, you have the need to protect cultural resources, but on the other hand, you have people who have property and limited budgets, and putting them in a position where they have to spend a lot of money may not be the goal that we have either. So, trying to, I mean, that's going to be the big policy decision that you guys are going to have to make, is how far do we make people go, and how much money do we make them spend, based on what evidence?
And we also have to balance that with the other items that we prioritized. And we can't say, okay, this, we can't just, which is why you're talking about some sort of moratorium or something in order to...
So, I, you know, a moratorium on building?
You can't do that. You can't do that. But we can't, we're caught with not enough money, not enough staff, but an issue that definitely needs to be dealt with. And my question is, does SEQA deal with it, Mr. Howard?
Well, and, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Clapp, I think in conjunction with the proposal to have this as a standalone discussion item, what I can do is present essentially a short economical white paper on the availability of state law. Right now, others that have spoken are correct, we do not have a local cultural heritage preservation ordinance. But we can provide you with a white paper on what remedies and what we do have that's available to us to use to assess the need to and the ability to protect cultural resources, and our cultural and archaeological resources, and have that as part of the discussion. I can have that for you within a couple of weeks, actually.
Yes, I'm going to, Mayor Pro Tem Blatt, and then I'll turn it back to Councilmember Wyre.
In all honesty, my comments that I was going to suggest was exactly as Mr. Howard just said. You know, we don't necessarily have to reinvent the wheel right now. There's certain things that are already in place at the state level that we need to be sure that we are availing ourselves of, and then as we move forward, we may want to tighten it up to Ojai. But I don't think, I don't think we have to necessarily put this on the front burner. As Mr. Howard said, in a couple of weeks, he could come back to us and let us know what laws are currently in place that we could administer just because they're state laws right now. And I think that's the quickest and easiest way to perhaps get this issue to the forefront, because it is a very important issue as far as I'm concerned.
Councilmember Wyre.
And I agree with that completely, but would add one proviso, and that's that I'm hoping this council will give direction for Mr. Howard to review the acute matters currently in hand, in process in the Community Development Department, and consult with staff, review those procedures, look at whether consultations have been done properly or not with Chumash representatives, not leave what amount to legal determinations to the Community Development Director. That's not appropriate. And I would just urge that we not say, well, we're going to look at this, when we have issues right here on the table that people have been bringing to us for months. And I think it calls for the city attorney to work with the community development staff to look at those procedures and how the things have been handled right now. That's what I would add.
So, everyone, Mr. Mayor, members of council, so everyone recognizes that will be an investment in time.
Yes.
And time is, time is money for lawyers.
And you're billing us for that, I understand.
I just want to make sure everybody's clear on that.
You're billing us, I know.
But yes, we can certainly, we can certainly include that.
Yes. And, Mr. Clark, do you feel that's inappropriate, that you would feel that's a be appropriate direction for the city attorney to work with the Community Development Director in that matter?
I think, I think that's a good step. I agree with what Councilmember Blatt said, is that we may not be able to do everything right now, but at least we can get a little bit of education and maybe get the ball rolling.
We can bring a little outside eye, some outside eyes and the city attorney's eyes onto what's happening right now. Okay.
So, I'm going to bring up the question again. That's just one item. How do we want to prioritize the other items looking into this? I mean, I personally agree with the direction that council has provided to staff and our city attorney in regards to cultural resources, and furthermore, I want to, again, I know it's time and money, looking at other procedures and protocols. Something that comes to mind is code enforcement. Our Historic Preservation Commission brought it up tonight, our Arts Commissioner brought it up. Are we enforcing the codes on our books? And how do we look at that issue is another question that we need to face. And if we're already giving direction to our city attorney in regards to cultural resources, would it be wise for us to really have him look at how to tighten up our code enforcement? Or furthermore, if some of our codes are outdated, do we want to go that far or just identify them? Or how do we want to, but it is an issue that has been coming up, and I know we are getting a compliance officer soon, or him or her.
When?
And maybe that would be the answer to that question.
So, yeah, our code, we've made a contention job offer, and we're going through the process of the final clearances and so forth, so we should have the new code enforcement officer on very soon. And we did spend about an hour and a half today talking about how to deploy that person and what their responsibilities will be, and I think that'll make a big difference. But that, what that is, is it's enforcing certain codes, but the code enforcement officer isn't going to get at the issue that was raised by the Arts Commission, or some of these other issues about policies and how those are enforced by staff. That's a completely different thing. But I certainly have heard what you have said about that and taken it to heart. So, I think one thing that I can do for you is, based on the conversation that you've had so far, and based on the things that are on the list, is come back with a more realistic work program as to, you know, because things have been added, some things are going to have to be delayed, and get your review of that at a subsequent meeting.
Because we also have to talk about PL zone, height and noise, and if we really want our cell tower or wireless facility ordinance to be up on full strength, we need to look at those issues as soon as possible.
I didn't, I didn't even wait for you on that one. So, we, as I said earlier, we've initiated, there's a process that goes with looking at the height ordinance, which includes SEQA, and really, that's about a 45-day process. We've got to prepare an initial study, and then it's got to go for, it's got to be posted for a certain amount of time, and then we can have a notice public hearing before the Planning Commission. So, we've put that in motion specifically because of the concerns that were raised at the last couple of hearings on the Communications Facilities Ordinance. Having said that, I have to take that into account. That's going to cause me to say certain other things on this list will have to be delayed. And I think I can give you a start at that, but then you're going to have to tell me what's more important and what's less important, and do that at a subsequent meeting.
Councilmember Clapp.
Yeah, as a matter of fact, on some of these, in this list, the museum and city hall roofing, some of this stuff's done, isn't it?
Yeah.
So, it'd be really nice to have this fresh, more updated list to get a clear idea, or if some things aren't completed, what percentage are they completed, to get a sense of really how, because you look at this now, and it's just huge list to begin with.
And if I could echo that, I think in addition to things that are already done, if they could be classified by ones that are clearly already in process, as opposed to something that hasn't not yet been initiated, that would be helpful as well.
And actually, actually, pretty much, yeah, maybe this chart is too hard to read.
I couldn't figure it out.
Okay.
Well, maybe I'll try another approach at presenting it.
Maybe do a, like a summary, well, anyway.
Yeah, I'll give it a shot.
And it would be great to also have our items that our commissioners are looking at, because that takes staff time, and we need to prioritize that, and maybe that would help us really decide what issues we should prioritize in conjunction with items that our staff is working with our commissioners, or even make us clarify what direction we want to advise the commissions to go.
And I'd like to echo that again, too, your comment. I think it's important that commissioners don't think that staff time is free. If you see, if you need, there's direction that council needs to give on the demand on staff time or the city attorney's time by commissioners, we should be involved in that prioritizing, because they're our advisors, and they shouldn't, they certainly should depend on staff for support, but if it, you know, it's starting to get to be too much of a demand, or we need to be in that loop.
And one thing that's really important for them to understand is that they want, if they want to have any conversation with the city attorney, they need to go through the city manager, that they don't have a hotline to the city attorney.
With, there's certain things that I've already authorized them to do, you know, if we're entering into a contract or writing a resolution or an ordinance, they need to take that to the city attorney and get the city attorney's review, and they don't have to spend an extra step going through me on that, but it comes back.
Mr. Mayor, in looking, and I, you know, we can talk about this as long as we want to, but I think that the suggestion that Mr. Clark come back with a little bit more usable list is a good one. But in looking at this, I kind of divide these goals into a couple of different categories. Those which are things that we really do want, and then those things that we absolutely have to be doing right now. And as a direction, just from my standpoint, the telecommunications ordinance is something that has got to be foremost right now, and it's, it is far ahead of the leaf blower situation in my book. So, I mean, that's something that we really do need to focus in on. And in conjunction with that, I think that the height limit is really important as well. Those are things that directly affect the quality of life and an impact on our valley. So, those kinds of things, I don't want us to lose sight of, that those are right in our headlights. As far as everything else, while we really need to look at these issues, things such as the leaf blower, or the second dwelling unit, or water-wise landscaping, those are all things that we need to work towards, but they're not, they don't have that same sense of urgency in my book. Yeah, the transient rentals are important, the visioning, the dark sky, all those are important, but right now, I mean, I think we really need to zero in on a couple of things, and one of them be the heights, and the other is the telecommunications, because if we don't do that now, something's going to happen, and it's really going to hurt our community. The other ones, you know, sure, we want that, but nothing can happen in those areas, pretty much, that's going to affect our quality of life like these others if we don't do it.
May I add to that real quickly? I think that the vacation rental issue is a very important issue, because it is a quality of life issue. So, I would have to add those two, and add the vacation rentals on top of that, and neighborhood planning is already in motion. So, there's four huge things right there.
Right. Neighborhood planning is in motion, and we're not going to stop that.
Yeah, we can, yeah, that's done. So, there's four things. Those are big things that take a lot of staff time already. So, adding anything more, any new and brilliant ideas, I mean, is it realistic?
I definitely concur with you guys. Something that else is in progress right now, too, is our website, and I think that's a tool we could take advantage of, and working and processing and being more inviting to our public, is maybe including these projects that we're putting on and on the website, on top of creating possibly a list on the website of potential projects in the future so we don't forget about it, and we could, the public could see that we are working on it. This is more of a standpoint of being more, having a better vehicle to communicate with the public is, I think, our website, and getting public input is our website. We could utilize that as a tool to, just to get things done and make sure we follow through.
Mayor Laura, out of consideration for those in the audience that are waiting for future agenda items, I think we should, we've given enough direction to the city manager for the next step, and we should conclude this item, in my opinion, and move on to the next item.
I just wanted to add one thing.
Yes.
Everyone has, so far, has had a pet area in this, and I'm just going to, I'm just going to say this, if we don't have 100% increase in rain by May 1st, we're going to have water problems in this valley. And for us to be negligent in that manner and not to even be talking about water, it's not good. It's just not good. It, what can we do? First of all, we need to talk about water usage, we need to talk about water applications, we need to talk about water storage capacities, we need to have, you know, the Casitas Water District come in and do more talks, we need more education to the public, but we need to be beating water to death in this valley. We need to be talking about it on a daily basis.
Thank you.
May I make a real brief suggestion? Why don't you go to Casitas and talk to Steve Wickstrom and ask him if he would come give us a presentation? I think that'd be great.
No problem.
Okay, so we'll schedule that in. So, with that, I think that is enough direction, and I think we should...
Mr. Mayor, I don't, I do have one report, and I'm going to give this to Rhonda. At the last VCOG meeting, one of the topics that we were talking about was the situation with sober living, alcohol and drug program facilities and community care facilities. And the handouts that we received from their staff really made a lot of sense to me with regard to how you can regulate it and the statutes to regulate it. So, I'm going to pass it on to Rhonda, who can then send it out to everyone to take a look at. The other thing that I wanted to, as I've been given some thought to, issues regarding our interaction with our citizens. I have something in my office and something on my website that I kind of can tailor to what I consider to be a, kind of a saying with regard to our interaction with our citizens. And it goes like this. A citizen is the most important visitor at City Hall. They are not dependent on us, we are dependent on them. They are not an interruption to our work, they are the purpose of it. They are not an outsider at City Hall, they are truly part of it. We are not doing them a favor by serving them, they are doing us a favor by giving us the opportunity to do so. That philosophy, I think, has a lot of meaning to it when it comes to the attitude that we need when people come into City Hall, as I say when clients or potential clients come into my office. We have an obligation to treat them with respect, because we are here for them, they're not here for us. And I think if we can think about it that way, I believe we'll get along a lot better with the people that we have interactions with that come into City Hall.
Any other reports from council members? No? With that, I'm going to go around the table with city manager, any updates?
You know, I just wanted to say there were a lot of big issues that were brought up today, and I take those seriously. I think a lot of them are very explainable, and I will explain them, and some not so much so. But I recognize my responsibilities, and will address them accordingly.